Good evening and welcome to the July 15, 2015, meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. Let me mention that we had scheduled a recommendation to the Marion City Council for ASDP 6950 2015, the Kettlin's Market Square Proposal to Change the SDP. And the applicant on that has withdrawn the application, so we're not addressing that tonight. So if anybody is here to hear about or to wonder about that, that will not be on the agenda after all tonight. So with that, we need an approval of our minutes from July 1, 2015. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the meeting minutes of July 1, 2015.
Second? If they move in second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. We have one consent item tonight on the consent agenda, and that's for AFP-7072, 2015, Crown Neighborhood 2 Blocks KLP and Q, KB Homes Extension of Approved Architecture. That's the MXD Zone. It was an amendment to final plan. Any questions on the consent agenda?
No.
Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve AFP-7072-2015, KB Architecture, Crown Blocks KLP and Q Amendment to Final Site Plan Approval, finding it in conformance with 24-170, 24-172A of the city zoning ordinance, with the one condition is right into the record.
Okay, second? If they move in second, and all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, and that passes unanimously. All right, very good. And that takes us then to our site plan agenda. And just for the record, let me read into the record. The members of the audience that are speaking, please print your name and address on the attendance sheet on the rack in the hallway by the door to the chamber, and indicate the agenda item which is of interest to you. Please keep your remarks in no more than three minutes. The timer will beep and blink yellow when you have 30 seconds left, so you can begin to finish your statement. The timer will beep and turn red when your three minutes are up. Any additional testimony that you might have can be submitted to the city in written form and will be a part of the record, just as your oral testimony. And when you do step up, please state your name and address for the record. So the first site plan is AFP-7039-2015, Barron's Lumber at 23 West Diamond Avenue, the 2,392 square foot addition and parking lot revisions. This is in the CBD Zone, and it's an amendment to final site plan. And presenting from staff is Kirk Eby. Good evening, Kirk.
Good evening. Yes, as you mentioned, this is an amendment to final site plan for the Barron's Lumber property. They're doing a small addition and making some minor revisions to the parking lot. It's located at 23 West Diamond Avenue in the central business district, or CBD Zone. The application is before the Planning Commission tonight, as required by Section 24-168, and it's in the form of an amendment to final site plan, which is allowed under Section 24-172A. There is one exhibit that has been added to the record I received on Tuesday from the applicant, just confirmation of the signed posting, and I can quickly show that, just so that everyone will see that there is the exhibit number 10. So that's pretty much it.
Okay.
And here, representing the property owner, are Barbara Aldrich, the architect, and Brian Donnelly with McCree's, Glasscock &amp; Hendricks, and they will be making a brief presentation.
Great, good evening.
Good evening, thanks Kirk. Yeah, my name is Brian Donnelly from McCree's, Hendricks &amp; Glasscock, and I'd like to introduce Jim Davis from Barron's. He's going to give a brief history of the development and a little bit of the background of the project. From him.
He can come to the podium at 15.
Yes, at 15.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jim Davis, CEO of Barron's Lumber. Quick background, we've been in business, and born in the city of Gaithersburg in 1947. We moved to our current location in 1985. At that time, and pretty much through the '60s and '70s, and into the '80s, we were primarily homeowner supply company, sort of like some of the big boxes are today. And we, that was the bulk of our business. When we built the existing property that we're in now, it was as a home center. And some of you may remember, we had a garden center, and it was very different back then. Then, a few years later, we welcomed into the city some big boxes, which meant we had to kind of change what we were doing, because they kind of took that business over. We then had to transition into a builder supply company. I'm proud to say that we have been very successful. It's taken us a while, but we're very successful at that, and we are probably one of the elite builder supply companies, certainly in the area, and actually known around the country even. So what we're doing to this particular location is to redo our showroom, to make it a state-of-the-art builder supply showroom, where builders will primarily use that with their customers. And to do that, we were very clear on how many square feet we need to display our products. There are certain things on the first floor that we need to get off the first floor to make the room, to make the necessary remodeling to the showroom. Primarily, it's our shipping and receiving department, our contractor entrance, and some, about maybe four offices, and a conference room. And by taking those off the first floor and putting them into the small addition, that will free up the necessary space to create the state-of-the-art showroom. So that's primarily what we're doing, and at the same time, we're updating our parking lot to get that closer in compliance to what our actual uses are these days. And as a side note, we also ran out, when we transitioned out of the home center concept, we started renting out space, and we actually are home to four churches on our second floor as well. So you'll hear some references to that as well.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Just to orient you to the site, the site is located on the west side of Route 355, on the southeast quadrant of West Diamond Avenue and Route 117. The parcel is 6.56 acres, and bound on all four sides by public right-of-way. To the north, across West Diamond Avenue, is a storage facility and auto repair center. To the west is multifamily residential, a garden apartment, two-story brick garden apartment. And then to the east is Route 355. The existing building presently is 42,269 square feet, two-story, built in early, the mid-'80s. Existing building is a mixed-use project with building supply, and as Jim mentioned, on the second floor, there's four churches that rent space, there's a paint center, and there's also a driving school. We've applied the...
You had no idea there was a driving school?
Yeah. On the second floor is the church where there's off-peak hours, so that we're using the mixed-use parking requirements for the site. The site requires 140 spaces, I'm sorry, 120 spaces. We have 146 spaces in the front main parking facility. There's a large central building, and then there's a number of open shelters that are used for material storage, somewhat outbuildings. The proposed addition is 2,392 square feet, two stories. The site, you wrote that larger plan?
Yes.
Perfect.
Anyone want to go?
That's good, that's fine, yeah. The site is pretty much accessed from two locations, one from West Diamond Avenue and a second from Maryland Route 117. The access off of West Diamond Avenue is primarily the large delivery and contractor entrance, where the trucks would enter in, and the vehicles would enter in, enter through a double gate to the material facility, where they would load and unload delivery supplies. The site is, the proposed development is going to be disturbing less than 5,000 square feet, so there'll be no requirement for sediment control or forest conservation, and would be then exempt from those two requirements. Due to the size of the site, the site generates less than 30 peak hour trips. We've submitted a traffic statement that has been accepted and approved by Public Works, and therefore, no traffic impact statement is required. I think with that, I'll just kind of wrap it up and turn it over to Barbara, and we'll go right into the architecture.
Great, thank you.
Hi, my name is Barbara Aldrich. I'm the architect representing Barron's Lumber, and this is what you see on the screen, two The existing building is vertical metal panels, built in 1985. It's tan, vertical, and what we would like to do is have split-faced CMU on the addition. Structurally, it's best for us, and what we would like to do is to complement the color of the existing siding, and then have the red on the bottom be something that goes with it. And I do have colors of the block, so you can all see.
This is the part that always looks forward to.
Is that?
This is the part that always looks forward to.
Oh, really? Okay, this will be the red on the bottom. It's called Nantucket Red from York Building Products, and the adobe on top, and then a band at the very top of the red. And we were thinking of red, white, and blue, but instead...
Chair, what was that house that was red and blue six years ago?
To make it a splash of color for the canopy. And then the windows would be trimmed...
Barbara, if you could sit down, so the microphone picks up you.
Then, okay, then the windows would be trimmed, and I did have a little trim of that, too, in this color.
So is this, does this become a public entrance, then, or is it still, like, you have to drive through the security gate, or I say security, you drive through the fence and the gate to get back here, right, to access this point? You're not sort of rearranging the access to the main entrance?
No, not at all, no. No, we're continuing the sidewalk, one down, the sidewalk goes right against the side of the building, and we'll just be continuing the sidewalk, so anybody can access that entrance.
Yeah, but the front door, as it stands, it is still the front entrance?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh-huh. Yeah, the front door is not going to change any.
Yeah, okay.
Uh-huh. So mainly, the corner of it, where, right there, if you can put your, yeah, right there, that will be the part where anybody can come in, customers and contractors come into that area. And it's, we feel it's welcomed with an awning over top, and gives it a spot of color.
Yeah, the main access will remain the same, and there's only 11 spaces back in kind of a delivery pickup area.
Oh, and the roof, the roof's going to be the same as what it is now. It's a brown metal roof, and we thought that that would be the best to keep the roof and the downspouts and the gutters to be the same as what's existing, just continue that color on through.
That's great. Is that everything?
The only thing I would mention, as part of the application, we're going to restripe the main parking lot to the standard nine-foot city spaces with double striping.
I did want to ask about the parking. One of the things, and I've just observed this, and I'll be perfectly transparent, it's anecdotal, I can't say I have any data on this, but it does strike me, there are a lot of things parked in the parking lot, and I don't know if those are connected to some of the other businesses, or churches, or other uses on the site. Maybe you could just comment, what's going on with a lot of the after-hours parking on that? Sure, come on up, yeah.
There's actually three tractor-trailer trailers in the parking lot right now, that are temporary, and probably within the next week, we're going to move those to our Virginia location, because we have a lot more room down there, so they will be, they will live down there. Occasionally, we might have to bring one up to load it, but they won't be parked there, but they are there now. There is a number of small utility-type trailers that you see landscapers using. Those are primarily just from our neighbors in the apartments next door that come to us and say, "We can't park our trailers next door, can we park them here?"
So you have an agreement, at least an informal agreement?
And we've always allowed them to do that.
And they move, they move off the site daily, they're not there for...
I can't say that they necessarily move daily. Sometimes, one might sit there for a while until that person needs that trailer for a job or something. A lot of them move daily, some of them don't, so it's a little more sporadic. There are three, well, there's also a small trailer that's closed in that belongs to one of the churches, and then there are three large panel trucks that also belong to the churches. Those are used for a couple of things. One is, one of the churches is called Journeys Crossing, and they meet at the Rio every Sunday, so they have to pack up all their stuff and take it to the Rio and unload it. They also use it to bring a lot of food, about a couple times a month, to Barron's, to distribute out to needy people. So that's pretty much all the vehicles.
So you understand all the vehicles, or there's sort of a known use and agreement that they're there?
Absolutely.
And...
The food truck, there's usually a food truck.
There is a food truck.
Yeah, there is a food, that's one of the churches as well.
Oh, it's one of the churches?
That's one of the churches, yes.
Okay. Kirk, so do you know if that impact formally, parking clogs or anything like that, I mean, is that something that...
Well, if you look at the proposed site plan, you'll note, if I can get the correct tool up here, you'll note that they are required to have 120 spaces, including five that are handicap, or accessible spaces, and they're actually providing 146 total, including five accessible. So they've actually gotten, you know, additional spaces that even if those are being used by trucks that are parked on, you know, overnight, that's really not going to impact the parking. And of course, the parking lot, anecdotally, is usually not completely filled up either.
Sure, sure, okay. All right, any other questions?
No.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience that wanted to comment on this application? No, okay. Seeing no one, Kirk, if you do the recommendation, please.
Sure, so in conclusion, staff does recommend that the Planning Commission grant AFP-7039-2015, which is an amendment to final site plan for a building addition and parking lot revisions to the Barron's site, finding it in conformance with Section 24-170 and Section 24-172A of the city zoning ordinance, with one condition, and that condition is that the applicant is to repaint the parking lot using the city double stripe and ADA standards prior to the issuance of a final use-inocipity permit. And staff just wants to clarify that the ADA standards that we're talking about is really just the marking standards, so in other words, the painting and, you know, the symbols and the signs, it's not, the parking lot was not constructed, at the time was constructed, the ADA requirements are different, so there's probably, it's probably not meeting some of the ADA engineering-type requirements, and we certainly don't want to impact, you know, require a large cost for that. So we feel that the remarking will actually improve the accessibility.
Excellent. And all of the other uses remain? Nothing about this addition changes the mix of uses?
No.
Good. Okay. All right, any questions about the recommendation?
No questions.
No questions.
Some comments?
Go ahead, go ahead and comment then.
Just to say, you know, obviously, this addition is little to no impact, I would argue, on the neighboring uses or neighboring views of any sort, and it actually brings a nice retail entry to what is often a neglected professional entry to the building, you know, installation for the professional construction trades is often given short shrift compared to, you know, a homeowner's entry to a building, so I'm glad to see a nice retail entry being treated as part of what is obviously a successful, wonderful homegrown business of Gaithersburg. I just would also sort of add that, you know, it's an interesting case study, the building itself, in a, not adaptive reuse, but sort of ongoing reuse of existing space, to have very compatible uses, which, you know, certainly wouldn't be listed, you know, in the phonebook next to each other, but they would, you know, they're really doing a great job of sharing that asphalt and sharing that physical structure. It's just a really neat project, and this is a great addition, so.
Excellent. Any comments?
Yeah, and I think it's wonderful how nice you are to the neighbors, and that's a, you know, we're a city where character counts. I like the fact that you're sprucing it up a little bit, because that area's kind of bland when you drive through it, and that'll make it look nicer. So I think it's, I think it's good.
Yeah, I think it's a very compatible, very appropriate use, nicely done on the addition, and congratulations on your success in the city, even in the face of all of the competition that moved in on the big box side. So it looks like there's room for everybody, and so great to see that happening. I think we're ready for a motion then, please.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve AFP-7039-2015 Amendment to Final Plan Approval, finding it in conformance with 24-170 and 24-172A of the city zoning ordinance, with the one condition is right into the record.
Second? Move to the second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. Thanks very much, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is site plan ASDP-7049-2015, and site plan SP-7029-2015, Crown Neighborhood 1, 403 Copley Place, Crown Lofts condominiums in the MXD Zone, and this is amendment to schematic and final site plan. And presenting from staff is Rob Robinson. Good evening, Rob.
Good evening, Commissioners. Bear with us one second while we do the transfer.
Sure.
As you mentioned, the applicant, Streetscape Partners, has submitted both an amendment to schematic development and final site plan application, including a parking waiver request, ASDP-7049-2015 and SP-7029-2015 respectively. Requesting approval for the construction of a multifamily condominium and associated amenities. The plan proposes a 1.75 acre site in Neighborhood 1 of the Crown Development, and this application is originally based upon schematic development plan SDP-11-001, approved April 4, 2011, and guided by the design guidelines approved as part of that application. On the screen now, I will orient you to the site. As you can tell, this is a more recent aerial, because we're starting to see stuff built out. This is the proposed site, as everyone may remember, these are the two-over-two condominiums right across the street, this is the Harris Teeter, and downtown Crown. As I mentioned, the applicant has submitted an amendment to schematic development plan application, and this has been submitted in accordance with Section 24-198-1C, which deals with no change in use involved. I will be upfront, and this application has been submitted at the direction of staff. On the screen right now, and it's on page five of the staff analysis, this was the SDP approval for this site. What it called for at that point was very similar, multifamily, five stories in height, basically covering the whole site, but as I mentioned in the staff analysis, the original thing directed the structured parking to be multi-tiered in fronting Sam Ike. At that point in time, there was a lot of discussion about how that would appear and looking, so when the opportunity came, when Streetscape came in and began speaking with us about doing it, the discussion was made, well, how can we change that? And then the decision was to go to essentially podium parking with the buildings above. Because of that, working with Assistant City Attorney Johnson, who has submitted, I have included the memo he sent to me in the record, this change is not a change in use, it does not change the building height or signage, does not materially change the orientation of the siding in the buildings, or the parking accessory uses, does not increase non-residential building floor area, does not increase the number of residential units, and does not remove 5% of the area designated for conservation. So therefore, 198-1C comes into play, and thus the necessity for the amendment to schematic development plan. I'd like to make sure everybody is aware, because of essentially being a parking waiver in two applications, at the end, I will be making three separate recommendations, and should these be approved, it will require three separate motions. With that, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Ben Bullock of Streetscape Partners to walk you through the final site plan.
All right, great, thank you. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. As Rob said, my name is Ben Bullock, I'm with Streetscape Partners, and we are very, very pleased to be here today, presenting our project, the Lofts at Crown Farm. We've put a lot of work into this project, and a lot of work into the design, and we hope that you agree that we've come up with a product and a project that will be worthy of your support. So we're really excited about this project, we think it's a great project, we have a great team, many of whom are here today, and we're particularly appreciative of city staff. There have been many staff members who've been very supportive, in particular Rob, but also Cliff Lee, the fire marshal, the affordable housing folks have all been very, very helpful and useful along the way. We've had great support and a great experience with them. We really tried hard to listen to the concerns from staff in the commission regarding the location and the visibility of the parking garage from Sam Ike Highway, and really took all of that feedback to heart with our design, and we think the result is a completely unique product that's not found anyplace else in the Maryland suburbs, and really, I'm not aware of anything quite like it inside the belt, or outside the Beltway, in the DC area. And we'll get to some of those unique features a little bit later, but as Rob indicated, there's no change to the height from the previous schematic development plan, no substantive change to the footprint, no increase in units from the previous plan, in fact, there's a moderate decrease in units. We have much better frontage and visibility from Sam Ike Highway, which really is the entrance to downtown Crown Farm, and the entrance to the downtown Crown in particular neighborhood. And we have also addressed one of the commission's other concerns, which was the residential frontage, looking at the back of the Harris Teeter, and we think we've come up with a design that minimizes that condition. So what we've ended up with is a contemporary new building that appears to be an adaptive reuse of a classic industrial building, and we've utilized high-quality rich materials like brick, and architectural stone, cement, bore, with some metal incorporated into the railings and the grills and various places, to come up with a design that we really think articulates the facade and the bays. We're, as you've seen, we've done something kind of unique with, by creating these faux smokestacks, which really evokes kind of an industrial feel, and we've also added this painted signage on the smokestacks, which we think really kind of takes you back in time, but yet brings you up to the present day. So Streetscape Partners, we're the applicant, but we wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for other members in our team. Lassard Design is the architect, and you'll hear from Ulysses in a little bit. Studio 39 is the landscape architect, and Joe Plump is here today. Vika is the civil engineer, we have Michael here sitting with me now, and Alliance Engineering is the structural engineer, and also the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing engineer as well. Streetscape Partners, we're very active in Montgomery County, we're very active in the DC area, we're a privately-held firm, we also have an affiliated company called Michael Harris Homes, which is our homebuilding entity, and we've done a number of projects, these are current projects that are active. 1011 is a condominium project in the district, it's 71 units that's under construction right now in Shaw. Meridian International is a deal with a nonprofit on 16th Street, right across from Meridian Hill Park, and that's about 150,000 square feet of for sale residential. Chestnut Lodge is a project we finished last year in the city of Rockville in the historic West End. Clarksburg Premium Outlets is 450,000 feet of retail that we're about to start construction on in Clarksburg, just up the way. Grevenor Heights is a townhouse project, we're working on in partnership with EYA and JBG. Bethesda Muse is a single-family home project in Bethesda, it's the first single-family home development of any scale in Bethesda in a number of decades. And then, most of you are probably aware of the townhouse project we just finished called Symphony Park, there on Rockville Pike, immediately adjacent to Strathmore. So this area plan gives you a little bit of the context for downtown Crown and the neighborhood for Crown Farm, you all are intimately aware with Crown, as you've been involved over the years, but what really attracted us to this site was downtown Crown really has a traditional urban neighborhood feel, but it has building forms that are found in long-established urban settings. So Crown Farm in general is really characterized by high-quality design and innovative urban planning, and we really wanted to take that to the next level, and wanted to build on the good work of people like David Schwartz with the Retail Project, the Bezuto Apartments, and then all of the good work from the other homebuilders who are active in Crown Farm. So just to give you a little bit of background on the site, and then I'll turn it over to Mike, is the site is about 1.75 acres, and we are proposing a project which consists of 160,000 square feet, gross square feet of residential, in three buildings. The three buildings will be five stories each, will have a total of 128 units, which consist of 47 one-bedroom units and 81 two-bedroom units. It's three buildings, as I said, built on top of one concrete podium, and the fact that we're building on that podium gives us the ability to do some pretty neat things with the project. In particular, because all of our parking is at the ground floor, we're able to screen that parking at the ground floor behind some what we feel are fairly high-quality and attractive screening materials. But then beyond that, because we, our residential units start at the first floor above the ground floor, we have this area above the parking that we can use for a courtyard space. So in between each of the three buildings, we have two highly landscaped courtyards, which we'll talk about a little bit later. which we'll talk about a little bit later, that consist of both common areas for all of the residents to use, but also have private patios for the residents who own units there at that level. We also, another unique feature of the project is that unlike many, or unlike most multifamily buildings, we have 24 two-level units, which will actually really give the Lofts at Crown Farm that real loft feel, where there will be two-level volume units with full floor-to-ceiling for the two levels, and real multi-level living, which we think is something that's very, very unique. Another unique feature that we have is each of our top-floor units will have a staircase up to the roof, and will have a private patio terrace at the rooftop level, which we think is a great amenity for the residents. But it also really connects the residents with greater Crown Farm. They really connect with the rest of the neighborhood. Each of the three buildings has its own lobby and its own entrance. Each of the buildings has its own elevator, and we have two garage entrances there off of Insley behind the Harris Teeter. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mike to just quickly walk you around the site.
Good evening. My name is Michael Goodman with Vika. I'm the civil engineer on the project. As Ben said, I'm going to discuss the surrounding streets a little bit and the vehicular movements. To the west of the site is Sam Ike Highway. In between the road and the proposed building is about 60 feet of property that's reserved for future Sam Ike widening. Diamondback Drive is to the south. There's no street parking on Diamondback Drive. It's actually a two-lane exit at that point, and it's a right-out only onto Sam Ike Highway for those two lanes. On the other side of Diamondback, there is a dedicated left-turn lane onto Copley. Copley is to the east of the parcel. It's a two-lane road. There's parking on both sides of the road, parallel parking on both sides of the road. And then to the north is Insley Lane, and it's also a two-lane road. In coordination with the city staff, there was some parking that was on the south side of Insley, and it was determined...
Do you want to put up an exhibit as you're talking about that? Or?
I can point out from here.
Yeah. So there's Insley, and you can see at that location, there's the two garage entrances. And then in between the two garage entrances, we've provided a loading zone. In coordination with city staff, we were concerned about site distances coming in and out of the garage with parked cars that would be there too long. Excuse me, too long. So we decided that removing those spaces would be appropriate. In addition to those spaces that we removed, we did add 10 perpendicular parking spaces at the end of Insley Lane as well. The two entrances into the parking garage are full movement, and they're 26 feet wide, so meeting the city code. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to you, Ben.
So as part of our project, we are requesting a parking waiver for 10 spaces. Our parking requirement, given our mix of one-bedroom and two-bedroom units, for 128 units is 181 spaces. Between 161 automobile spaces and 12 motorcycle spaces, we provide 1.73 spaces total. However, if you include our bicycle spaces and two additional spaces for mobility scooters, we have 202 parking spaces for all modes. So we request your consideration of a parking waiver for 10 spaces. So in just a minute, I'm going to have Ulysses with Lassard walk us around the four sides of the building. But I just want to say that we're very proud of this design. We've put a lot of effort into coming up with something that's very unique. We think we have a great mix of rich, yet classic materials that really will elevate Crown Farm, and we really want to have a detailed articulated look to this building, and I hope you agree that we've accomplished that.
Good evening. My name is Ulysses Montez Deoca from Lassard Design, the architects designing this project. I'm going to start explaining the architectural character, how did we come up with this shape. Very quick, the proposed character, the first conception idea is to integrate it and to emphasize and expand the current fabric that exists in Crown Farm, where there's a rich mix of traditional and modern eclecticism, mixed in a very unique way. Another thing we wanted to do is to bring modern, at the same time, propose a timeless architecture that would age well during time. We want to propose a memorable, yet simple design. In summary, the best way we can describe this is an industrial adaptive reuse theme throughout. Going back to the overall plan, the basic composition is three bar buildings on top of a parking floor. And this solves so many things that are a sense of place created. We have the opportunity that this is a gateway lot. It's one of the access to the overall Crown Farm. And as you remember, the previously approved plan, it was a parking garage. Now we have a residential building, so we believe this is a strong neighborhood gateway statement. There's also a generation, by doing this, it generates a special living experience from people that drive by, walk by, and live there. If we go to the next elevation, please. This is the elevation looking at Diamondback Drive. Again, the basic composition that consists of three-bar buildings that are perpendicular to Diamondback, we're considering Diamondback the front of this development. Each building, like Ben mentioned before, it has its own individual lobby, its entrance, its canopy, its front door. The elevation throughout, it's composed and articulated meticulously with material transitions that have to do with what happens inside and what happens outside to create an organized pattern. There are also balcony projections. The main materials, it's, as you can see, is red clay brick throughout with architectural stone banding and coping. There are elements with cementitious board and trim as well, and we're utilizing metal in railings, canopies, balconies, and decorative grills at the garage openings.
So at their closest, because they're splayed, I mean, this is, the elevation's a little bit deceiving because you don't really show the splay that's happening. How close are they at the closest point?
The narrowest is between building one and two. Building one is the one along Copley. The closest site is twenty, uh-oh, right here. Excuse me a second. Courtyard. Twenty-two foot nine at the narrowest, at the narrowest point. And between building two and three is 25 foot one.
And how far does it widen out to?
It winds up to 62 between building one and two, and 79 foot two between two and three. One thing to mention is that the corner units at the ends, basically fronting Diamondback, those are facing Diamondback. The secondary functions of the unit is facing the other building to minimize the window requirements and to comply with code. On the back, facing Sam Ike, we have the service areas of Harris Teeter, and we did the opposite. Over there, the courtyard's wider, and we have the opportunity of turning this unit 90 degrees. So instead of looking at the service, we're looking towards the amenity.
Sure.
It was a great opportunity and good solution, we believe. If we go to the next elevation, emphasizing the industrial adaptive reuse theme, there are two decorative chimney stacks that also were following the same fashion. There's signage integrated with power washed, painted lettering that will give some patina and make this feel a theme. Balconies are also treated to look bolted, as if this was an afterthought, an adapted element that was implemented on an existing warehouse building as well. This Insley elevation, again, the three-bar building perpendicular to Insley and Diamondback, I just mentioned about the service areas that we're looking sideways instead of the, towards Harris Teeter. This street, across the street, we have the service areas of Harris. On our side, we have a lot of activity. We have the two parking access driveways. We have our courtyard egress. We have the exit discharge doors from the residential use above, and we also have the utility access points. So even though it's a small service conceived, perceived street, this is actually very active with this relationship.
Well, another thing just to note is we've got the building signage in various locations in the back, so residents and other people within the Crown community can clearly identify that they're in the Copley or at the Copley building.
It's just a minor thing of carrying on the painted signage just in a different facet.
So on the Diamondback side, essentially the main entrance to the building, if you're pedestrian walking in from the street side, is there anything else on the first floor? How much, I know you have a lot of parking on that ground level. What happens right at the entrances? Is there common spaces, you know, shared lobby space or something, or is that a relatively?
They're well proportioned lobbies, but there aren't any other common areas or common spaces.
There's no amenity, I guess what I'm thinking of is things like fitness rooms or, you know, party rooms or whatever. What are their amenities there are? Is that happening on that level around the entrance, or is that happening somewhere else?
No, it's not. Residents have the opportunity to purchase on an annual basis, membership at the retreat, which is part of the Crown Farm community, so they have access to all the amenities at the retreat. For fitness facilities, there's also the gym right across the street.
Yeah, actually, that's, I understand. I really wasn't asking if you had the amenities. I was just curious about what happens on the first floor besides parking. So I guess you have a lobby and that's it?
Correct. There's a lobby, there's some utility rooms, and as you say, that's about it.
Okay.
One of the things we really tried to accomplish is get in required parking on one level. And it was a big challenge to do so, candidly, and didn't leave a whole lot of space elsewhere in the building for other amenities. And frankly, given the demographic and the profile and all of the other amenities within Crown Farm, we just didn't think that it was all that necessary to provide other amenities because Crown Farm is the amenity.
Yeah. All right. I think I might have cut you off. I don't know, did you have more to present?
As far as elevations, we're good. We're going to turn to courtyard discussion. So that's a great transition because the one amenity that we are providing is this courtyard space, which we think serves a number of functions. It's kind of the public meeting place for all of the residents. And we spent a lot of time getting this right because it's a challenging space. As we identified, it gets narrow. It does widen out, which we think really connects you to Crown Farm, to the greater Crown Farm community. We spent a lot of time with the landscape design, and we submitted comprehensive landscape and hardscape plans that comply with the design guidelines and provide multi-season color and texture. And we really wanted to provide a high-quality programmatic experience and a high-quality layout that clearly delineated the public space, which runs up the middle of each courtyard, from the private patios that each of the residents will have. So we think we have a nice palette of materials that accomplish that. There's three elements to the landscape and hardscape. The first off is, of course, the courtyards that we've talked about, but we're also providing perimeter plantings, perimeter and foundation plantings, and the other landscape, or I guess hardscape element is the private rooftop terraces that are shaded out here, and we'll get to those in just a second. But within the courtyards, there's fireplaces there on the north side where it widens out. We've got some fire pits in the middle with the objective being to provide areas for communal seating and gathering, whether it's eating, cooking. We have gas fireplaces there, sorry, gas grill stations in the middle there so residents can cook. And then we're particularly excited about some planters that we've designed that incorporate benches. So it's kind of a Corten steel with a masonry base, so that the benches and the planters are kind of one contiguous unit, which we think is kind of cool.
So is that, access to those courtyards, are they from the units that are on that level, or is it just one common, or maybe a couple? But is it both common access and also sort of private access from the units?
Correct. Correct. There's public access for residents of the building as a whole, the south side of the courtyard. And then each of the residents whose units front that courtyard will have their own private terraces there in the tan area. Each of those are the private areas, and then the public versus private spaces will be delineated with plantings and with other screening materials.
And all that landscape is maintained by the association?
Correct.
Okay.
And assuming there's a flexible seating table programming.
Yes. Yeah, we didn't show the furniture on this drawing, but we will, of course, provide a variety of seating and lounging opportunities. And then just real quickly, the rooftop area, we think, is something else that's particularly unique to this project. So each of the unit owners on the fifth floor, the fifth and top floor, will have a private stairway to get to their own rooftop terrace area. And we just think it's a great amenity. We think it's going to be very desirable. It's something that we think is unique, certainly within the city of Gaithersburg and elsewhere in the Washington D C area. And we just, we're very, very excited to be able to provide this amenity to the residents And then the last particularly unique feature that our project provides are these two-level loft units. And within the four residential stories, on each of the four corners of each of the three buildings, there are two units. There's an upper unit and a lower unit. So there's 24 of these two-level units in total. And the bottom floor will have the, will have one bedroom, the kitchen and living area, and the upper level will have kind of a loft office area with the master suite behind. And we're just very excited about these units and think that the volume, combined with our traditional kind of punched window, will really give it a very unique loft feel that also is very contemporary.
So does the upper unit get the roof deck too, or is it?
Correct.
Yeah. So it is ultimately being like a three-story unit in a way?
It's, in some ways, it's a three-story unit.
No, because that would violate the S D P, so it's not. It's very much a two-story with a rooftop terrace.
Let the record show.
Let the record show.
Thank you for the...
Fair enough. Okay, great. Anything else?
I think that's pretty much it. I just want to reiterate how excited we are to be here and to be presenting a project in the city of Gaithersburg. We're very excited about the classic, yet contemporary, architecture. We think it complements the other projects in Crown Farm. And I really appreciate your consideration of this project and look forward to your questions.
Great, thanks. So with the rooftop development, which I think is a great idea, at least in concept, how do you reconcile things like air hampers? I mean, how is all that taken care of on these? Where do you put the?
So each of the, there will be condenser units up on the roof, and they'll be screened from each of the terraces with screening materials.
So you sort of segregated where you'll put mechanical equipment from the actual...
On the screen before you, the little dots is the gang, you know, for lack of a better term, the condensers, the H V A C units. And one of the things we noted in the staff report is, instead of just doing typical fencing, they actually use the stairwell structure, loft structure, however you want to phrase it, on the top level of that physical building to actually do the screening from the open-air terrace. When you have two terraces, you know, as such as this condition right here, side by side, then you'll have a decorative fence. But obviously, you know, given everything else, they were very smart in working with their team on how to group these together and use, like in this example... and use, like in this example right here, you know, the three sides of these structures are essentially screening everything from the terraces.
I see. I guess, you know, I guess through covenants and other things, we have some understanding of how to control things like, stuff that would show up up there that you don't want to see from the road, you know?
Absolutely. In, in every, you know, for-sale residential project, there's extensive, you know, rules and regulations, and it's, and it's handled in the condo docs.
Yeah.
And hopefully we, you know, the, the demographic that we're, that we're going for, I think is going to be, is going to be very receptive to this kind of space.
So Rob, just, I just want to clarify something. I don't have the packet in front of me, I read it earlier. Do the, the unit count, parking count calc's and what all that is and what, what the waiver represents?
As Ben mentioned, based upon the unit mix breakdown that I have up on the screen right here, they have 181 spaces. Spaces are required. Under our revised parking ordinance?
Let's start with total number of units. It's 128 units.
So it's 128 units, so thus requiring 181 spaces. Under our new parking ordinance, what it states is when you have, you know, basically structured parking, if you have more than 50 spaces, a minimum of 2% must be dedicated to motorcycles. That's a minimum. So what they've done, you know, so that would break out to four.
Right.
They have gone to 12, so they actually count. So the actual drop, with this, you know, they have 161 automobile spaces, you know, 12, so they have 173 spaces. So essentially looking at it, you know, they're basically at eight, but, but the request is for 10. So there, I want to make note of something else. With the 181 spaces based upon the unit count, regardless of in some ways the arbitrary, you know, per-unit mix, that brings out to 1.4, 1.41 spaces per unit. Just with the automobile at 1.61, if you just go with the 161 units, that brings out to 1.26. That's actually a higher ratio than is required for the one-bedroom units. So overall, I mean, that's why staff, as we mentioned in the report, we feel very comfortable supporting the 10, because literally we worked with them. We added the 10 spaces on Inslay that do count. We make note that the unit, the on-street spaces behind the Harris Teeter along Inslay are not included in the calculations. The on-street spaces on either side of Coppley are not being considered in this, so this is strictly on-lot spaces.
Right, right. What is, how, how will parking be assigned? Or how, are the units getting, each getting a space and there's an optional second space? Or how, how is that allocated?
We haven't gotten that far. You know, it, it's probably, if I had to speculate, I'd, I'd say that as part of our marketing program and part of our sales program, some units will have a unit, will have a parking space included, other, and I think most units will have a parking space included, and then for the additional parking spaces, people will probably have the option to, to purchase additional parking.
As there's a lot of questions on the screen right now, is the garage layout, so everybody can get an understanding, and to answer Chair Bowers' question earlier, you know, the, the lobby layouts are shown in here also.
So there, there's just a little bit of a concern that the parking, the structured parking next door is, is open, you know, there's no charge, it's an open garage, so there's a little bit of concern if, if this becomes paid parking of one form or another, that you end up using some of that parking across the street for a use that it wasn't intended for.
Right. I, I, we'll get into some more discussion later, but I think by the time we finish this, we want a clear indication that the parking is for the residential use and it's not optional. You know what I mean? So that there's, there's, we know that the calculations really cover that, because one of the difficulties about this particular site is that there's very little surrounding it to take, take some of the, if, if people do decide not to park there, there isn't a lot of other parking close by. It's, it's a little bit of a hike.
Well, just, just candidly, right here on the other side of Inslay is this giant surface lot in front of Harris Teeter.
But that's Harris Teeter's parking, so my.
No, that's shared among Crown, the original approval for Crown.
Are you talking about the back corner?
I'm talking all of the, this, this is back here.
That's the loading zone back there.
Is the loading, but you get past it. So what we had mentioned in the staff analysis, when you look at the original SDP, you know, it proves something like 1,400 spaces, and it's all to be shared with the exception of the top levels related to Bezuto, and they were overparked by, I believe, 800 spaces between the two garages, the surface parking, the on-street parking, and this parking garage right here, right now, is open public parking to serve the commercial core. When this remaining multifamily pad site comes in, they will build their own garage that's separate.
I think the major difference is just that if, if this is a gated parking lot, the others are open parking lots, so if you create an incentive to not use the gated parking lot, the sort of shared idea kind of starts to break down, right? So if it was open, then it's all one big.
Well, nothing that I've seen to this point showed gated.
Oh, really?
Our, our intention is, is to do access control, although the particulars are.
It looks like a big garage door on the elevation.
Roll a door.
Yeah. I call that gated. I just.
So I, I don't, and I'm not saying it's bad or good, I'm just saying somebody be wary of, you know, that if you start charging for these spaces, we're really going to be using, more than likely, you're going to end up using some of the free spaces and you're not going to take full advantage potentially of this garage. It may work out fine. Just keep an eye on it.
Okay, any other questions?
Questions.
No questions? Is there anyone who is here to comment on this application, or is this all part of the applicant's team? Okay. Okay, nobody? All right, so Rob, what's the, what's the recommendation?
All right, it's a whole sheet. Once again, as I mentioned, there'll be three separate recommendations, each requiring its own motion. The first one is staff recommends to grant ASDP 7049 2015 Crown Lofts Condominiums Amendment to Schematic Development Plan Approval per the findings presented by staff in the analysis in compliance with Section 24160D-10 of the City Code. Second one, staff further recommends to grant a parking waiver of 10 spaces for the Crown Lofts Condominiums, and staff further recommends to grant SP 7029 2015 Crown Lofts Condominiums Final Site Plan Approval finding it in compliance with Sections 24160D-9C, 24170, and 24171 of the city zoning ordinance within nine conditions as presented in the staff analysis.
Great. Well, I, I, I like the architecture. I think you guys have done a great job of pulling through a scheme that makes sense for the site but isn't just another, tell me what you call it?
Mid-Atlantic.
The neo-colonial, mid-Atlantic.
Mid-Atlantic contextual colonialism?
That's the one. It's more like northeast, right? The old New England factory building. That's great. So, so nice job with that.
Thank you.
A couple technicalities. So on the signage, what is, you know, when you, when you sandblast paint on the side with a logo or with a name, is that really signage, or is it more of a decorative element? Or what are we considering that?
We are considering it signage.
Okay.
Just under the basic sign ordinance, you know, if you wanted to do something like this at Old, in Old Town, it would be considered signage.
Okay, and we're, and we're good, I mean, it's considered signage, that's all I want to know, and that's what you're thinking about. It's a nice, it's a nice touch, and I assume there's not going to be, you know, smoke plumes coming out of the chimneys in all our.
We would hope not. Nothing coal-fired.
Okay, excellent.
Nothing coal coming out of the chimney.
And I think, I think where my real reservation is, is this issue with parking. I think if we're going to give credit for, and do a parking waiver formally, I, I think we need some assurance that the parking is in fact attached to the units. It's not, it's not an optional thing where somebody's incentive, as Matt said, to park somewhere else for free or for whatever, whatever those conditions might be, because then I think it's completely counterproductive to then give a waiver and assume that we're, we're getting the shared parking used the way we think it is. Does that, does that make sense, Rob? Any follow-ups?
Yes, one of the things we can do, Condition Number A discusses once again us reviewing the Homeowners Association documents and covenants. Usually that's related to any maintenance obligations, but obviously we can check that for making sure, you know, there's one unit per, you know, one, one dedicated space per unit.
I'm sorry, are there any two-bedroom units, or is it all?
Yeah, the most, most of the units are two-bedroom. It's, it's 81 two-bedroom units.
So when you do two-bedroom units, are they, are they designed like two master suites where you would imagine two cars being assigned to them with, you know, shared?
They're not, they're not designed as, as two master suites.
Okay. So more, more of a family-type unit as opposed to?
I think that's right.
Yeah. Because I know there's, there's some, there's some product in the market that deliberately goes after, say, two professionals sharing an apartment or a condominium in a way that, that suggests almost like two apartments within an apartment, you know what I mean? But the master suite kind of condition.
That's not the, the market that we're going on.
Yeah, which, which would suggest two cars easily for, for those, those units. Okay. So Rob, so how do we handle this parking thing? What is the, what's our precedent in the city and what, what is your, your recommendation?
We recommend it staff-supported because it is only 10 spaces because.
Not the waiver, but, but the, the, sort of the assurance that the parking that's being built really in fact goes with the units that are being added to.
We can amend Condition Eight to, you know, covenants are being revised to incorporate any maintenance obligations and dedication of parking to units. We can add that language into the condition, because that, that's where it would show up, obviously, is in the HOA documents and covenants.
Okay. Does that sound about right for you?
It's, it's certainly something that we can look at. It's, 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 it's a little bit tough to commit to each unit having one space because one of the, the biggest attractions that we have to this area is that it is so transit accessible, and, and we, you know.
Yeah, it is, but let's not be naive. I mean, people have cars, and, and so what I don't want is a condition where, as Matt said, they're essentially incented not to park there, and then they end up hitting and impacting the parking that we've already assumed is going to be shared and with the businesses and other things.
We can agree that all the parking goes to the building, but something that's maybe two and someone maybe zero. Yeah, in other words, some people maybe use public transportation and not. I mean, is that what you think, Rob? Sidebar.
Actually, Harris, if you want to come to the thing, just so we can have the discussions.
My name's Harris.
I don't want to horse-trade.
I'm sure. I'm sorry. I didn't want to.
What's going on down there?
No problem. My name's Harris Schwab. I'm one of the principals in Streetscape, and I, I understand and, and your concern, and what, what I was discussing with my colleague was the idea that dedicating one to each unit might be a problem, but what we can do is agree that all 100, how many spaces?
Seventy.
Seventy-three will be allocated within the project. Now, there's, some people might want two parking spaces, another person might buy a unit and say, I'm using public transportation. Crown has the buses to Crown, and they may not want parking, and we'd rather give, you know, in other words, it will be dedicated to the building.
My only concern by going with that situation is you are then assuming that that owner is going to be there in perpetuity. So if you begin to essentially allow one unit to buy three spaces, and because somebody else does not want one, at the point in time they sell that, the next owner may want their space, and it's not there to give. I would feel far more comfortable when you have 161 spaces and 128 units somehow to, to grant one unit per, you know, however.
I, I think the practical example stretches to that one too, so that, you know, if it's, that space isn't being used by that unit, then it's still unused, it's still an unused space. So I think, I think it works either way. You have the same practical limitations, you know, people moving in and out, people not using their space that might be assigned to a unit, you know.
And what else often happens?
I think you have more flexibility.
Because people sell them in, in condo buildings, they, they can trade amongst themselves parking spaces as well. And it's, it's in our interest to have these spaces sold to the residents. It's what we, we're required to build this parking, and we're going to, to make these spaces available to people such that the residents buy them, or they're given to them, or, or the last thing you want to do is, is build all of this parking at, at great expense and then have it sit empty. It's, it's, it's in all of our interest that residents, whatever we have to do to get the residents to, to take these spaces.
But I think Rob, I think Rob's on to something to get it into the HOA documents, so the public property comes back, you know, with transition, and you're able to sell back and buy, and buy more. You know what I mean? So it becomes an HOA document issue, not, so I think Rob's on to the right, the right idea of what the language of that is.
So maybe it's a combination based upon what I said and what Harris said, that, you know, that once again somehow we, we affirm in the HOA docs that it's clear that all the, you know, the parking is associated for the units there, and.
Maybe they're rented from the HOA, and maybe they're, you know, maybe it's an ownership that's a short-term and sell back.
No, it's when you operationally.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to rent them.
I, I, no, I don't care about the language.
Okay.
That's your job.
But, but the mechanism is the HOA, you're directing staff to make sure that we have some sort of assurance that the parking in here is dedicated for the units within the structure.
That we can definitely agree to. Thank you.
And so the 10 don't seem like such a, such a big hit, it's a relatively small percentage.
Yeah, I mean, the, the big argument about the neighborhood, and we, we've been through it. We, we get it. I think in general, there's some parking waivers and, and sort of mixed-use things that I would encourage, you know, further, you know, burden. It's the old, it's the old baseball player that said, you know, nobody goes there anymore, it's just too crowded. You know, it's, it's a wonderful thing, so to have, you know, overloaded parking garage is a wonderful thing. So, but all of that kind of big-picture stuff about this mixed-use community and transit, the shuttle bus going into this metro and all of this, that good stuff, and having all your amenities within walking distance is, is good and well, just now we're creating this sort of protected area, so we just need to make sure that there isn't an imbalance now in this shared parking.
Yeah.
And then, I mean, I would add that I'm just wildly disappointed because, you know, I just, it's no fun to be a planning commissioner and not have anything to criticize. It's, it's, it's really kind of a letdown. It's, this is a really great project, and, you know, my ego aside, the best compliment I give you is that this is what I would have designed for this property. It's a really, really well-done.
Well, now we should be able to find something to pick at.
Yeah. It's just really, really well-done, and there's, you know, there's a couple of things that in an ideal world I think we'd like to see, you know, moving those, you know, billy entries over to, over to Copley Place, but that's, you know, the geometry of the site doesn't really allow it to, the same, the same effective three-tower design, and I think that's just dead on site. I mean, I really, really like it.
It's a good-looking project.
You know, just, we've been talking about the, the fake smoke stacks, and I want to share with you, those are actually the stairwells, and when we designed it, they didn't look good, and we said, what can we do? And so that's where the smokestack idea actually.
There's a number of things in here that jump out as making positives from negatives.
Yeah, that's, that's an example of.
Yeah.
So do you expect you're going to do all three towers together, like bring them all up at once, or what's the, what's the phasing plan, do you think?
There, there's going to be phasing, and that relates once again to two conditions here. Condition four, talking about the traffic control plans, obviously, given the tight site and that there's already existing buildings, this, this is going to be a tight thing, so they're really going to have to review with Department of Public Works and with Wes's crew of permanent inspections to make sure everything flows, so that's why there's a condition for approval, you know, as part of the site development permit process. The last one is also number nine, talking about the streetlights pathways and everything have to be completed prior to the occupancy of the phased tower. As everybody is aware, you know, at certain points, you know, sometimes things are left hanging, so for example, what.
Yeah, what do you mean by that exactly?
What we're basically getting to, let me find it good. So, bear with me one second, let me get. So Tower One's the first one built essentially before occupancy is granted for that. Final condition of these sidewalks, streetlights, landscaping, all of that will be put into place, because these are still under construction, so we wouldn't want, our, our goal is not to have them put in final conditions, only to have to tear it out.
Yeah, and I guess it's the podium is this concept, you'd have to have that whole thing in before you just.
Correct.
You couldn't phase that, right?
The intent is that, is that the podium will be built in one shot.
Yeah.
And we'll just, we'll, we'll roll crews from, from Building One into Building Two to Building Three, but, but, but the objective is to have occupancy in Building One while, while work is continuing on Building Two and Three.
Right. Okay. Good. I look forward to seeing it. I think that's a very interesting approach, the rooftop decks, the two-story units. I'm not sure we've seen those around here, have we?
No, we haven't. No, we haven't.
The, for this loft, loft apartments or...
Well, we have a few.
Do you have the Panas apartments?
Yeah.
They're usually not conducive to mid-Atlantic.
Contextual.
That's why they show up in the, in the contemporary units, like in the West End and stuff like that. We did a few, but they're townhouse.
Yeah, very good. Any other concerns with the conditions or proposed conditions? So you're going to amend, what is it, number eight?
Number eight. So number eight would now read homeowner association documents and covenants are be, to be revised to incorporate any maintenance and parking obligations in association with this facility and reviewed by staff for approval prior to the issuance of building permits.
Very good. Any other concerns?
We just need to find some more properties in the city for these guys to build on.
All right. Very good. So is there a motion, please? Actually, three.
Three.
So let's start with the amendment to the SDP.
Is that the first one?
That's the first one.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve ASDP 7049 2015 amendment to schematic development plan approval per the findings presented by the staff in compliance with 24-160d10 of the city code.
Second.
Moved in second. In all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass as unanimously. Now we need a parking waiver. Motion, please.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve a parking waiver of 10 spaces for the Crown Lofts condominium.
Second.
It's moved in second. In all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. And now finally, the site plan approval, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve SP 7029-2015 final site plan approval finding it in compliance with 24-160d.9c and 24-170 and 24-171 of the city zoning ordinance with the nine conditions, including the amended, amended condition number eight as read into the record.
Second.
It's moved in the second. In all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Thanks very much. Good luck. Good luck in projects.
Thank you very much.
I'm curious, just not, not really on the record as part of the application, but who will be, under what name are these being built? Who would be, is it, is it Michael Harris or is it?
That's a good question. It's likely to be Michael Harris since that's our home building entity that's known in Montgomery County.
Okay.
But Streetscape is really our, our name to the, to the trade and to the, you know, to the industry.
Gotcha. Okay, great. Thanks. Good luck. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right. So that's our regular agenda. And I think that takes us to from the commission. Gary, can I start with you, please?
Yes. And watching all the programs of the meetings I missed, I know that at one, one topic covered include public, included a lot of accolades for Public Works.
Yeah.
And I just have to say, I have to jump on the bandwagon as well because I found two, I never gave up my insurance career. I found two potential hazards, safety hazards, turned them into the Public Works and they fixed them and they kept me informed all the way through the process. And it was, and even thanked me for bringing them more work.
Well, good.
No, it was very impressive.
Yeah, they do do a good job. Thanks for, thanks for mentioning that. Matt, anything?
Just another quick planning plug for the city's parks and rec. I think, which is another sort of planning observation, the dual use of public facilities, including schools, you know, MCPS properties, city properties, private properties, that, that Parks and Rec with the city really does a great job of, of, you know, putting to use during the summer a lot of facilities for the use of the, of the city residents and, you know, surrounding jurisdictions. It's really a great sort of planning piece. You know, we always worry when we do master plans, when we do make approvals, that we're approving, you know, these white elephants, these buildings that only get, you know, 12 hours of use a week or, or just eight hours, you know, Monday through Friday and all the asphalt that goes along with it. And it's just really great to see this, you know, ongoing, obviously not new, ongoing, continued use and reuse, dual use of properties. It's really, it's a great planning observation.
It is, it is. And it's impressive how much mileage barons is getting out of that, that building, right?
Yeah. It's really impressive.
Let me mention one quick thing. I had a conversation with Marty earlier today and we were talking about some of the upcoming, potential upcoming activities. And one of the things that I think I'm going to toss it to you for a little more information about this, but we got into some discussions about maybe some of the next sections of the master plan that we'll be looking at or needing to look at. And what I suggested was we might have a conversation about that at our meeting in August, within mind, having that as part of our planning report, not only talking about what, what's been accomplished over the past year, but what we see coming up next year, especially in this sort of forward thinking, master plan updates, special study area updates, whatever it might be, and maybe wrap a little bit of planning around what those might be next month. So we can mention the planning report and get ahead of things like the budgeting process for the city, get ahead of the strategic planning process with the mayor and council, and make that a part of what they, they think about when, when they, they start doing their work in January.
That sounds absolutely great. I mean, we, we've definitely always been a little bit behind on the strategy idea. You know, we've, we've been a little bit reactionary. You know, we've been, great staff, we're doing great work, but we've always been a little bit behind, Dave, while we haven't been looking forward as much as we could be. We have the brains to do it. We've been a little strategically, not as far ahead as we could be. That's a better way to put it. That's great.
And I, and the conversation was all wrapped up and I, and I had to frame it with, I recognize in no uncertain terms how busy the staff is and they're getting even busier. And I want to make sure not to suggest that we're, we're looking to pile on or to add more workload where it's, it's not necessary or not really, when capacity's not there. But I think there's a little bit of room for some of that to move in that direction.
But it has a long-term payoff.
Absolutely.
If we can get a good planning strategy going and start to build momentum behind it, it makes some of those master planning decisions and public consensus and all the rest of that stuff easier.
And Mr. Chair, through, to that point, we're starting to try to tell a story for our organization and our needs as far as staff goes. And this plays right along with it. And we need to start projecting out what, what we need and, and the size of staff and those types of things.
And what the city really needs and what the city, you know.
Yeah. And so, you know, to, you know, we don't want to put ourselves in a situation where we're constantly reacting. That's kind of where we're at this summer. I mean, thankfully, we are seeing a lot of, a lot of business and that's, that's great for the city. It, it comes at, you know, part of our reputation is for this area of the, of the metro region, we are able to do things very, very efficiently, very quickly and very well. And you guys are a big part of that. We, we want to keep that reputation. And in order to do that, we need to be able to react to things as they come along. And part of that is, is, you know, getting those strategies in place and getting the, the plans out in front of things, so.
So I think what we agreed is that in August, staff would bring back maybe an element or two of the master plan that might be ripe for some, some relooking. And whether it's about updating the plan itself or just maybe reenergizing some of the implementation steps that were already proposed for us to review and comment and offer a little bit of support to it. And that might then show up as part of that budgeting and strategic planning. And I'll be, my, my knee-jerk to that, why, as we started talking about it, was maybe transportation is the next one to look at because there are some things in there that are very much on the implementation level that we might, we might look to put our own kind of endorsement behind. So we see that, but I'll work against it. There might be some other issues, too, that staff will uncover kind of in the process of preparing for that, that meeting. Makes sense? Anything you wanted to add to that?
No, no, I just, we appreciate the partnership and all the help you guys give us. And we're, we're here to help you, so.
Great. All right. So that, I guess, takes us to from the staff. So I don't know, Trudy or Marty, you want to pick up from there?
Trudy's got some dates to talk about.
First, I wanted to note that it has just recently been announced that Gathersburg High School received their LEED gold certification.
Oh, great.
So that's very exciting.
They get the big glass plaque in the, in the lobby to go with it, isn't it?
I don't know. I don't know. Coming up next Monday night, there are two joint public hearings, one on the schematic development for Metamune Garage. And then we also have a joint public hearing on the MXD amendment procedures that night. And then on August 3rd, we have a rezoning request for 700 Quince Orchard Road. And soon those things will be up on our city projects page for you to, well, I know the Metamune Garage and the mixed amendment procedure are already on the project page. And also the mayor and council's agenda should be published by Thursday evening for that. Then we have our planning commission meeting on August the 5th. And we have, I think, four applications, site plan applications that we'll be looking at. Or actually, it's three recommendations and at least one site plan. And then on August 10th, Monday, August 10th is the joint work session on the adequate public facilities ordinance. And then on Monday, August 31st, there is a work session. It's not a joint one, but we feel that you'll be interested in that. It's going to be a presentation on the 355 BRT study and also a presentation on the Corridor Cities Transit Way by the Maryland Transit Association or Administration.
Great. That's worth watching, yeah. Sure. Excellent. Any, any, Frank, anything connected? Did we stay inside the boundaries of...
Yeah, I think you did.
Very good.
Very well on the motions.
I'm going to review the tape.
Yeah. First review says maybe.
Excellent. All right. Mary, are we good on, on polling for all the meetings? Any news?
Um, can I answer?
Did you have any questions?
I...
There's a lot on the calendar for, for all of us.
Yes, yes. Yes, on the work session.
You've got us covered.
Yeah.
Good. Okay.
We have three, three, four joint public hearings. I sent something.
Good. All right. If there's nothing else, have a good evening. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.